I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing for a moment of silence for all those serving across the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I want to welcome everyone to the Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting of May 22, 2019. I'm going to introduce the board members and consultants. To my right, we have Robert Anzalone; to my left, Sandy Capriglione; we have Chris Gerver; we have Gail Nogal, our secretary; all the way to the far left, our consultants, we have John Collins, our traffic consultant with Mazer; we have Stu Turner, he's our planner with Nelson, Pope, and Voris; then we have Natalie with H2M; and we have Rick Golden, our attorney; and Natalie's our engineer. And I'm Maria Hunter, and I'm your chairperson for the planning board. And bear with me, because I have allergies tonight, so I'm not speaking very well. First item on the agenda, board members, have you a chance to read the minutes from May 1st? And so, if so, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Microphone's on?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Done. First item on the agenda listed is Pine Ridge Estates. It's sanction request of preliminary approval for six-lot subdivision located off of Scunny Monk Road in Highland Mills and known on the tax maps as section 213, block 1, lots 4 and 5. And... Just bear with me, I can't find my letter. All board members, you received a copy of the email from Mr. Solomon, censor?
Yes.
Alright. On May 16th, Asha Horowitz sent an email. We all got a copy of the court filings regarding the Pine Ridge case. Also, Pine Ridge is on the May 22 meeting for our update. It seems like I will need to be out of the country to Israel next Monday and won't be back before Thursday. And so, he's asking for an extension to June 5th. Rick, do you have any comments on paperwork that we received so far?
Yes, I believe that this request is in order. I think that the applicant that is before you is the proper applicant to be before you, notwithstanding an email that you got to the contrary. So, I think the board should proceed with acting on the extension. And if you are agreeable to the one-month extension that's requested to June 5th, then I think that a motion for that would be in order.
Thank you. Board members, any thoughts or concerns about the extension request? With none coming forward, I'll offer a motion that we grant the extension to June 5th.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris?
Aye.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so this will be on our... You have this Natalie for our June 5th, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Ulta/Woodbury Center. Public hearing for ARB of canopy and awnings for Ulta Beauty located within the Woodbury Center Shopping Center. Said property is located at the intersection of Center Drive and Route 32 and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as section 225, block 2, lot 1.12. Applicants here, and just for... I want to thank Chris?
Yes.
After reviewing the file, I contacted Maria at 3:40. I didn't see the ARB application, and I did give copies to all the board members and to Rick and Natalie, maybe Stu, I'm not sure. So, we have the ARB application, because it was missing from our packet.
Could put that one.
Alright, I want to give a brief overview, and did you bring samples?
Did.
Perfect. Alright, just give us a brief overview of what we're... what you're looking to do.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Chris Simonello, Associate Director of Development for Kimco Realty Corp. My company is the owner of Woodbury Center, the Coles Anchored Shopping Center. That also includes Modell's and Forever 21 as part of its retail lineup. We're here tonight to present certain facade modifications we'd like to make as part of our lease agreement with our new tenant, Ulta Beauty. Ulta will lease the former 9,700 square foot space previously occupied by Pier 1 who vacated in May 2018. Started in 1989, Ulta is a well-known and respected retailer of high-end and generic cosmetics that has grown to approximately 1,200 stores nationwide. Kimco is proud to have 40 Ulta stores comprising 400,000 square feet in our nationwide portfolio and considers them to be a first-rate operator, consistent with our goal to operate best-in-class shopping centers in our industry. Before continuing, Madam Chair, I have samples of the facade of the materials we'll be using. Do you mind if I hand them to my esteemed attorney? Thank you.
I have to do something.
Just going through all the changes, we plan to demolish and replace the Pier 1 box sign with EFS material to match the balance of the shopping center. We're going to be adding storefront glass; we're going to be painting the green canopy a classic bronze; and we're going to be adding cloth awnings underneath the canopy. I'd like to go through these individually, very briefly, if you don't mind. The sign is going to be replaced and we'll be matching the EFS facade and skim coating to match colors to the balance of the shopping center. We're adding storefront glass to allow for more natural light. Like I said, the canopy is going to be painted in earth-toned bronze instead of that green color to freshen the look and feel of the shopping center. And lastly, we're going to be adding cloth awnings. These are part of Ulta's branding and corporate identity. They're orange sun umbrella awnings; they're going to be located underneath the canopy, protected from the sun; they're a lightweight aluminum frame with cloth coverings; they're easy to maintain and replaceable if necessary. The bottom of the awning will be approximately eight feet from grade, so there's going to be an eight-foot clearance; the top of the awning will be 10 feet from grade. And if you can just take a look at the door, it's about a seven-foot-high door; the bottom of the awnings are going to be approximately one foot above the door. These awnings are consistent with other Ulta stores and Kimco's locations that are maintained to the highest... to the highest standards from our property management staff. In closing, we believe the facade and storefront modifications being requested enhance the look and feel of our shopping center and are consistent with the character of Woodbury Center. We respectfully request approval, and we'll open it up to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, you have any questions before we open up the public hearing? Could you just do me a favor, just put this on the front there, so...
Sure.
...in front of that display, so people can see the colors? Thank you. Perfect. Robert, anything?
Is the awning fireproof material?
It will be, and if it's required by the building department, we'll make sure that it's fireproof material, certainly.
So, alright. Anything else?
No.
Sandy?
I'm good.
Chris?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright, gentlemen, just going to have to ask you to have a seat, in case I have anyone from the public that would like to speak. And being that this is a public hearing, notice is hereby given that the Village of Woodbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, May 22, 2019, at Woodbury Village Hall, 455, Route 32, Highland Mills, New York, in the matter of the application by Kimco Realty for an ARB approval of canopy and awnings for Ulta store within existing commercial center. Said property is located within the Woodbury Center Shopping Plaza and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as section 225, block 2, lot 1.12. If there's anyone... This is just the hearing on Ulta. Anyone in the second row that would like to speak on this? Third row? Fourth row? Please step up to the podium.
As the board may know, I'm counsel for Millwood Place LLC, the hotel owner-operator located in back of Woodbury Center. We were on the list of properties we notified in the public hearing, so we did get that letter today, actually. Excuse me for not sending my comments into the board previously, but I just got notice that it's about an hour or so ago. The one issue we want to bring to the board's attention has to do... I believe it has to do with the ARB approval, but it really centers more in on the sign itself, which I think is part of the ARB approval here. And we want to note to the board that there was a previous approval granted by this board back in October of 2001 that has conditions in it that limits and controls the size of the letters on the signs within the center. I don't know whether this is compliant or not, but we believe that that resolution from back in 2001 limits the size of the letters on this building to three feet. And I didn't hear in the applicant's presentation how tall the Ulta branding is. Can't really tell from the scale of it, but I asked the board to be aware of that fact in your deliberations. And I have a letter that I'll give to the board that has a copy of that resolution from the board from back in 2001.
Thank you. Alright. We're going to give them all to Gail, because they have to be stamped in. If you could pass this down to Gail, please, thank you. Anyone else in the fourth row that wants to speak on Ulta? Fifth row? Anyone around the perimeter of the room would like to speak on this application? Board members, what's your pleasure about closing the public hearing?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Rick, I'm going to defer to you on 2001 resolution.
I have not reviewed the 2001 resolution. I was unaware that these comments were coming up. But this ARB application before you is not with respect to the sign, it's with respect to the other facade requirements. And so, I think that, notwithstanding the comments concerning the sign, it's really up to you whether or not you believe that the facade elements that are being changed here, which is the matter before you and which you have a resolution before you, are appropriate.
Chris, thoughts, concerns, comments that were made tonight?
No. I mean, Rick said it was... What we had in front of us is for the awning and the colors of the awning and the... I think we should move forward.
Sandy?
Rick, ultimately, it's Gary. Gary that will have purview of the sign itself, correct?
Gary has jurisdiction with respect to the sign. There were elements of an early approval of yours that discussed sign approvals and things, but once you've made those approvals, then whether or not a sign conforms to that or not is up to Gary when somebody requests a building permit. And if Gary gives a building permit and somebody doesn't like it, they can object to it, but not before this board. It's really not up to this board. And my understanding is that Gary has given his okay with respect to the sign. That was the representation of the applicant back, I think, in May, when they came before the board. Mr. Cudisco, I think, at that time indicated that Gary Thomasberger had no problem with the sign, but that what's before you here does not deal with the sign, it deals with the other issues.
Thank you.
Robert?
I'm fine.
Alright. Applicants, you have any concerns or...
No, other than to echo what Mr. Golden advised, that's correct in connection with the sign application. The awning was actually part of that application as well. It was the awning that Mr. Thomasberger, you know, referred to this board, which resulted in our application.
Okay, thank you. Board members, what's your pleasure with the resolution of approval? You want to read it? Resolution of approval for Architecture Review Board for Woodbury Center, Harriman LLC, Ulta in parentheses, on page two. Public hearing was convened on May 22 and closed at the same date. Specific conditions on page three. Number one, no building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rending submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval. Nor shall any certificate of occupancy be issued for any structures constructed accepting conformance with such renderings. Any deviation from such renderings will require further planning board review. Two, prior to signing of the plans, the applicant must comply or comply... What's... Will comply? Alright. With the memorandum of the village engineer dated April 25, 2019.
Must.
Must, okay.
Shall.
Shall? Alright.
Shall.
So, we're changing that... We're adding the word "shall" in front of "comply." Must, will, shall, whatever. With the memorandum of the village engineer dated April 25, 2019, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Three, the awning shall be maintained in the clean, slightly non-deteriorated and safe condition at all times. Four, sight lighting shall be designed with non-glare fixtures which provide internal shielding to eliminate off-site glare and to limit the foot candle level at the site perimeter to 0.1 foot candles. Light fixture shall not exceed 35 feet to the top of the fixture. Signs shall only be illuminated during operating hours. General lighting shall be reduced to security levels after operating hours. Five, all new windows and doors shall be constructed of non-reflective material. Applicants, okay with what I've read?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And then there's the general conditions. This approval is conditioned upon the applicant submitting all necessary copies of the plans to be signed, including my laws required, to the Village of Woodbury Building Department within 60 days of this approval. Okay? Do I have a motion to accept?
I make that motion.
Do I have a... Excuse me? With the modifications added?
I make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Brock and Mann. Applicant requested appearance to discuss site plan for proposed shul and mikva to be located with an existing single-family dwelling to include an adjacent parking area. Said property is located at 22 and 24 Catskill High Rail in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as section 254, block 7, lots 1 and 2. Rick, do we need to review anything before we go on? Just for the... We're talking about only the one lot. Which lot number has the house on it? Is it the address 22 or 24?
24.
Alright, so we're only going to be discussing lot 24?
That's right. The village exercised its right to go ahead and accept the irrevocable offer with respect to the other utility lot. And so, that is not in the applicant's name and is no owner authorization with respect to that lot to proceed. But the applicant certainly can go ahead and discuss what they're doing on the other lot. Obviously, without the second lot, it complicates matters with respect to parking and other things that may need either a waiver from this board or variances. As you know, if this lot, which does not meet all the applicable bulk requirements for this use on this size lot, you have the ability to waive those if, in fact, it's shown by the applicant that by not waiving those, it would place a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion. They need to, in my opinion, need to present something to this board that demonstrates that, and then you can consider that waiver. When they... They should request that waiver specifically and provide how it establishes a substantial burden if you didn't waive those bulk requirements. So, that would be one thing that would have to be done, just as a matter of procedure, before we allow the applicant to proceed with respect to the... what he wants to talk about as to the site plan. We could not find in our file that there was an environmental assessment form that was filed, and so, we can't take any even initial seeker actions with respect to this until we get that form. So, if the applicant could go ahead and submit the EAF, next time it's on the application, we'd be able to start taking the initial seeker steps with respect to this application.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Michael Bogan. I'm an attorney with Cy, Padgett, and Roselle, representing the applicant. As counsel has just stated, there is a dispute over whether or not this revocation was effective or not. Obviously, the village believes it was not effective. We believe that there was a revocation and that the... this board does have the ability to move forward in considering both lots. And we would ask, notwithstanding counsel's offer, that there are other alternatives and other ways of perhaps proceeding, we would ask that the board consider proceeding on the application as it's stated, with the additional lot serving as the parking area, because we have submitted documentation both to the town and to the village that we believe clearly demonstrates that the revocation of the prior dedication was effective.
I didn't ask for reports, did I, on this application, which is fine?
Just so that... Let me just make just a preliminary response to that. Obviously, my advice to you is that you should only be considering the one lot. However, if the applicant wants to go ahead and present something that relates to both lots, they can do that, it causes no harm. My advice to you is that you would never be able to approve anything other than on the single lot, but if they want to talk about the other lot, I don't think that you should cut them off. But it's something that, right now, the lot is not owned by them, and there is no owner authorization to utilize that lot. And in the past, when that's not yet in the record, sometimes it's an oversight, sometimes they haven't yet obtained it, you've still allowed applicants to go ahead and talk about the property. It's just that you could never approve something unless you have a known as authorization or they are in ownership of the property.
Okay.
I'm David Shawman, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I think staying at that point that we have an issue, we want to move forward, even we have to dispute about the property, I think we will revise the plans and will take the advice from the attorney at that point. That will revise the plans and revise the narrative and whatever the waiver request, what we need from the board, we will submit that to the board. Basically, we'll take off for now the parking from the next lot. However, we'll be ready any time to put a condition, if you want, in approval that if the end will be that we will get it back, the lot, we can implement parkings in that lot. But for now, I think instead of just going nowhere, we'll continue with that single lot and we'll revise everything, and we hope to be back and we'll submit, basically, before the next submission date to be on the June 19 meeting, because we have actually... we are under violation, we need to move forward on that.
Okay. The only thing I would just underscore again is that there is that provision in the bulk table. It's a footnote in the bulk table with respect to the waiver by the planning board that would obviate a need to go forward to the ZBA and get an actual variance, which would be subject to a different test, obviously, the state mandated test for an area variance. So, my suggestion to you, so that everything is clear, is that you have a specific waiver request setting forth which bulk requirements you desire the planning board to waive and what the extent of that waiver is, and set forth the basis for that waiver that is set forth in the footnote to the bulk table, which complies with relupa in First Amendment and demonstrating that by not granting it, it would place a substantial burden on the exercise. So, if you put all that together, the board will consider that and determine whether and to what extent it's willing to issue waivers.
If I could just inquire just one further question?
Sure.
So, if we were to proceed that way and seek the waiver, then the... let's call it the acceptance or the inability for us to get an authorization from the municipality to move forward with the other lot, would that be considered a valid basis for the waiver?
Well, the basis... First of all, it's going to be a determination by the planning board, not by me, alright? But you are going to be presenting your arguments based upon the current set of facts. The current set of facts, as I have advised the board, is that you have one lot and not two lots, and therefore, that is the only thing that they would be able to issue an approval on. So, I think you need to take that into consideration when you're presenting your argument as a substantial burden, is the current situation that you have one lot.
And including the background facts that led to that situation, is that something the board could consider?
The board will consider anything that you present.
Okay.
And I don't want to cabin you in any way in saying you can only present a certain argument. I am leaving it up to you, and the planning board's leaving it up to you to marshal whatever argument you want with respect to the substantial burden element. The board will consider that. If necessary, seek advice from me with respect to what substantial burden means, et cetera. But ultimately, once they are advised, to the extent that they're not already, as to what that standard is, they will make their determination based upon your presentation and their analysis of the facts.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you're going to come back to us with a revised plan?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll be the submission within the next two weeks, hopefully to be on the June 19 meeting.
To be on June 5th, they would have to have it in by... It would have been today, and it's the holiday. So, we're looking at probably the second week, the second meeting, which is June 19th? So, we're looking at possibly June 19th to be on the agenda.
So, the submission date is June 5 on that, right? Two weeks before?
Right. And it would be... Have to be in...
June 5th.
Yeah, June 5th. It would have to be in by... Should have been in today, right?
Oh, two weeks.
Oh, by...
For June 19th.
Yeah, by the June 5th, yes.
Yes.
You're right. I've said, like, I apologize, I'm foggy tonight. Alright, so we'll put you... We'll add that to our June 19 listing.
Assuming that we get all the applications. Correct.
Okay. I'll just put that on here.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Well, I'm getting my next file. If anyone's here who wants to speak on the Woodbury Common scoping document, I do have a sign-in sheet up at the podium. If you want to sign your name in now or wait till you come forward as you speak, I just ask that you print clearly for our secretary, so she gets your name in the minutes correctly. Next item is Woodbury Common. Review and discuss draft scoping document for proposed construction and expansion of the Woodbury Common facility to include two hotels with related spa and restaurant facilities, expansion of the existing parking garage, the development of a second parking garage, additional infill of retail spaces, helicopter pad, and related improvements on two parcels located with frontage along New York State Route 32 within the Village of Woodbury. The property contains 149.2 plus or minus acres and is known on the village tax maps as section 225, block 1, lot 70.2, and section 226, block 1, lot 1. The properties are located within limited commercial, industrial, business... Actually, there's three. Limited commercial, industrial business, and light industrial office park districts. Good evening, just state your name and give us a brief overview of what you're looking for.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Jennifer Kanek from Price, Meeshawman, and D.R. Minnie, on behalf of the applicant, Woodbury Common. We're here for this evening, as Madam Chair has mentioned, for the public scoping session, which we submitted a draft scoping document to the board on May 1st. I do have a couple of reports I just want to put on the record that we received from your village professionals. We have your village engineers' report dated May 17 from H2M. We have your village partners' report dated May 14 from Nelson Pope. And lastly, we have your traffic engineers' report dated April 30th from Mazer Consulting. I do have with me this evening several members of my team, Mr. John Villapiano, Vice President of Development, who will provide... of Development, who will provide an overview of, a description of what we're proposing in the way of improvements. I have also with me this evening David Mastrata, who is the General Manager of the Woodbury Commons. I have with me Patricia Ruskin, as well as Megan Hayes, who's the professional engineer for PSNS on the project. And lastly, I have with me Mr. Will Lodean, who is the traffic engineer from Langen. Without further ado, if there's no other housekeeping items, I can have John give a brief overview of the project.
Thank you. And just to add on to you, you mentioned NP and V memo, H2M memo, and Mazur. On May 6th, the notice was sent out, and then on 5/8, the record put in there classified of the scoping meeting. And also, I just received a, from New York State stamped in tonight from the New York State DOT, and I thought there was one other one. Oh, on the May 13th, we received from New York State Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. So those are all the memos so far that we've received.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, consultants, public. John Villapiano, Vice President Development. Sure. V is in Victor, I L L, A P is in Peter, I A N O. So as we're proposing in the scoping document, I have here to my right is an overview plan of Woodbury Common. We are proposing 159,626 square feet of infill retail. That's a net add, a combination of both new construction and demolished spaces that are existing. That is within the footprint of our center. We are also proposing a brand-new five-level parking deck to the north of the site. We're also proposing an extension, expansion of the four-story parking deck that's located in the south of the site. The net add of parking spaces would be 2,140 spaces. We're also proposing four, we'll call them outlot pads, which would be adjacent to or within the existing footprint of the parking area right now and adjacent to the new parking deck that we're proposing in the north. These would include two hotel pads with a total of 240 room keys connected and integrated with the hotels. We were proposing a combination of restaurants, netting roughly 12,000 square feet in space, 6,000 square foot spa. There is also two outlot pads, which would be an additional 14,000 square feet of retail. Worth noting, within the parking decks, we anticipate 20,000 square feet of storage space that would be available to our operations team and also to our tenants. On top of the existing parking deck, as well as the new parking decks, we would be proposing solar panels, solar panels to provide alternative energy to our development and the surrounding grid, as well as needed amenity in terms of shelter and shade for people parking on the top deck. The last piece of this is just an overarching view and a reassessment of all amenities throughout the property, as we do with all of our assets in the portfolio. Woodbury Common is a hard, a large draw for the region, and the customers and the tenants expect a lot. And with this project, we would integrate multiple amenities, one highlight of which would be a proposed helipad on the property. Others currently exist at the center, and we would just expand upon those seating areas, common areas, kiosks, carts, RMUs, and such. So that is an overview of the property and invite any questions and comments.
Thank you. I'm going to go to our consultants for a brief comments before I open it up to the public, since this is a scoping meeting. John, do you want to start with anything? John is our traffic consultant. Thank you, John, over there. And we got this, John.
The latest letter you received from New York State DOT indicated they would like to see a little bit more emphasis on the exterior traffic study, as well as what was, what they considered to be quite a bit of onsite traffic management operation. I think we've looked at the onsite. We incur what's needed. In fact, they did not have my April 30th memo to the board, which expands on the required traffic study, not only with respect to the number of intersections that have to be evaluated, but also with respect to not only an individual intersection analysis, but also the entire corridor analysis. The entire corridor analysis will be in synchro and will allow the board to see plus variations, what happens if certain other things happen. The, has to, what has to be decided is the number of external or additional projects that should be considered in what they call the no-bill condition. That's the condition that would exist prior to the applicant's project, and the board will have to discuss which of those projects. There's going to be several within the village. There is a major project, the Gardens, that has started but then lapsed. I'll call it lapsed. We haven't seen anything in quite a while. So the question is, should that be included in the no-bill or wait for that applicant to come in? The problem of putting it into a no-bill before its time is, the fact is then theoretically, from a traffic standpoint, you have quote "approved" the project if you approve this application because it was part of the base volume. So I'm always hesitant about putting too much into the no-bill, but I think we're going to have to discuss the projects not only in, within our village, in the village Woodbury, but also within Curious Joel. And there's different ways we can handle that particular application. So that's an overview of what has to be required, and I think, once we hear the comments from the public and other board members, we have additional work to do to make sure we include all the, all those extraneous projects that we want to have evaluated or included. I hope that's a quick summary, and I didn't want to take up, otherwise I could take up an hour.
Oh, I know that. Thank you. Stu?
Yes. We could all, each of us probably take an hour, but this is really to get further public input. But let me just, we distributed a memo that's dated May 14th. It includes a number of items that we think should be either added to the scope or added to further enhance the scope, which is part of what John was getting at. The thing is important to remember is that this, this scope is to guide first the applicant and then ultimately the board and the public to make sure that we address all the important issues relating to impacts and how they can be mitigated. And if we leave too many things uncertain in the scope, I think it leads to longer discussion subsequently. So that's the reason that I think John mentions, and I will mention a couple of items that we think should be more specific in the scope, so that there's less discussion or argument later about whether we have included all of the matters that might potentially impact the road system or the immediate environs. So I'm not going to go over all of the items in the memo, and to some extent, it will depend on how the board decides to proceed in revising the draft scope. But there are several things I would like to mention specifically. The, one of the, we get to our, our first, I think, very important item is, well, first, I think initially in the, in the EIS and in the scope, the EIS should explain why this is a supplemental EIS because we're building on a set of circumstances that exists in a previously approved project. And I think how that's explained is important, but it also helps to define what the real impacts of the additional development is. We're not going back to square one. We already understand the impacts of what has been built. We've suggested adding to the social and economic discussion fiscal impact, a more precise fiscal impact that has more to do with costs. That is often argue, it's arguable as to whether that is an environmental impact, but it's an important aspect for the board to be able to make judgments on how the project ultimately should be, or you propose that the ultimate should be built. So we suggest adding the fiscal analysis to the socioeconomic impact because the seeker talks about balancing social, economic, and environmental concerns. There's a matter of how the, and I'm going to leave it to Natalie to deal with things like the stormwater. We think the scope may have addressed some important stormwater issues but didn't address impact on the existing retention areas that already are in place. So that, it may not be any impact, but I think that has to be addressed. The next item, an item 10 on our memo, is, has to do with noise. And while the applicant has clearly indicated they will analyze noise, I think the scope should more clearly identify what the important receptors are, what areas are vulnerable to any noise, and I think it's probably going to occur mostly either during construction or with the helipad. So you have the schools nearby, and you have some residential areas such as, you know, Rose Place and Turner Road. They're nearby to this development, and they could be impacted. That should be spelled, we believe it should be spelled out. There are several references in there, you'll see in the memo, so I don't have to go over those. Hopefully, you've looked at them, references to things we don't quite understand. But there are two then that we think do have to be analyzed. John started to mention the nearby projects. There are several, not so much ones that are planned like the Gardens, but ones that are actually under construction or approved, and those will be likely built. There's a, there's a large project along Nenninger Road, Nenninger Road. Veol Moshe Gardens, which is under construction. The shops at Woodbury and the Central Valley project that is at the corner of Estrada and Route 59. We think those are all approved and under construction.
You mean Route 32, not 59?
Route, I'm sorry, 59. I got 59 on my mind. They're all just as bad, but I'm sorry. Route 32. Okay. We don't want it to become 59. The other one is the alternatives. The EIS will have to deal with what are the alternatives to the proposal. There's often a long discussion about how many alternatives you consider, what those alternatives should be. Obviously, the developer is proposing what they consider to be their preferable alternative, but the scope should include what other alternatives will be considered in the analysis. And it doesn't at this point. It just says alternatives will be considered. So I would, I would hope that we wouldn't get to the point where the applicant has submitted, after months of work and a lot of time and money, alternatives that the board says, well, why didn't you do this and why didn't you do that? So as John suggests, now is probably the time to add whatever you or subtract, well, add because they haven't added any alternatives at this point, what alternatives you think are reasonable. And they have to be, according to the seeker regulations and guidelines, they have to be alternatives that satisfy the objectives of the applicant, but there could be modifications or variations of those alternatives. So those are, oh, there's one more that I want to mention specifically, the visual impact, because again, it goes back to the same question of the boards, including in the EIS, those areas that you feel are most sensitive to the visual impact of what's proposed to be built, particularly, again, along Route 32, around the schools, and along the residential neighborhoods in the immediate area. So depending on how you decide you want to proceed tonight, there are some items in our memo that are literally suggested corrections or revisions or items that should be considered but aren't major policy questions. But we would suggest that they all be included in the revised draft, whoever you decide should modify the draft before you adopt it. That's what I have at this point.
Thank you. Natalie?
Sure. Thank you. Just for the public's benefit, I'd like to just briefly describe where we are with respect to seeker. You've assumed lead agency, you've classified the application as a type 1 action, and you've declared a positive declaration of environmental impacts, which requires the preparation of an environmental impact statement. The applicant has distributed the scoping document, which we're here to review today, as well as receive public input. They distributed this on May 1st, and that starts a time clock, which requires 60 days from the date of distribution for you to accept the final scope. With respect to that, we think that this should be accepted by June 19th unless the applicant agrees to an extension. Before I go on to the highlights of our memorandum, which I'll try to be brief, on page 2, under page 3, heading of the involved and interested agencies, we listed the Federal Aviation Administration as an involved agency that should be interested. So it's just a quick typo for the record. Moving on to those.
You're saying the FAA should be interested?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay. That's what I have it. All right.
All right. So as far as the environmental impacts that we just want to briefly mention for the board to consider, as well as the applicant and the public, we know that historical experience with the soils at Woodbury Common during construction have shown that they're prone to dust transport, so we believe this should be explored and discussed. Associated with the Water Resources Section, the applicant should discuss both impacts to surface and groundwater resources. Reference was made to one or the other, but it wasn't clear that it was for both. As Stu mentioned, the existing onsite drainage infrastructure should be explored as the condition of the same, and also the impacts with the additional improvements. Furthermore, we recommend that the discharge locations, both to the village drainage systems as well as the surface and groundwater resources, be mapped. Also, Stu mentioned with respect to noise, and then John with respect to traffic, you know, there are obviously important considerations with respect to these. We understand that the applicant will have to provide representative data of the actual conditions that aren't affected by the ongoing DOT construction, so that's something that they should consider with respect to the existing conditions and then, you know, impacts to the same. Parking should be discussed, and an assessment of the number of spaces per GLA for the entirety of Woodbury Common. Their existing septic fields in proximity to the proposed improvements, which should be discussed. As the applicant stated, two hotels are proposed. We believe the availability of existing and planned temporary occupancy locations should be discussed. And finally, in our memo, we recommend that a tabulation of the full accounting of all the GLA space existing and proposed be submitted with a plan. During the 2012 renovations, Woodbury Common provided GLA tabulation for only those proposed improvements, but we believe it's an important time and appropriate to start tracking, considering the whole common. And that is just a quick summary of our comments. There are others, and we understand that the applicant will address these with future revisions.
Thank you. Rick?
I don't have any specific comments with respect to this. I think when the board discusses it and then hears from the public in whatever order that happens, I can probably assist the board as to what are the next steps and whether or not we need another version of the scope before acting on it, or whether or not it's ready to be acted on.
Thank you. All right. Board members, I'm just going to read the notice, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Notice of public scoping meeting, Village Oudry Planning Board. The Village Oudry Planning Board has determined that the proposed action described below may have a significant adverse environmental impact, and an environmental impact statement in parentheses, which is EIS, will be required. in parentheses, which is EIS, will be required. The planning board wishes to solicit public comments on the draft scoping document prior to the preparation of this environmental impact statement at a public scoping meeting. Proposed action: The applicant, Premium Outlet Partners LP, is proposing to construct an expansion of the Woodcarmen facility to include two hotels with related spa and restaurant facilities, expansion of the existing parking garage, development of a second parking garage, additional infill of retail spaces, helicopter pad, and related improvements on two parcels located with frontage along New York State Route 32 within the Village of Woodbury. The property contains 149.2 plus or minus acres, and is known on the village tax maps as Section 225 Block 1 Lot 70.2 and Section 226 Block 1 Lot 1. The properties are located within the limited commercial, which is LC, industrial business, which is IB, and light industrial/office park, which is LIO Districts. A public scoping document, excuse me, a public scoping meeting will be held at Woodbury Village Hall, 455 Route 32 in Highland Mills, New York, on Wednesday, May 22nd, at 7:30 PM. Written comments on the draft scoping document may also be submitted prior to the scoping meeting. A draft scoping document is available for review in Village Hall, as well as online. And it's the address that was listed. Scoping is the process by which potentially significant adverse impacts related to the proposed action that are to be addressed in the forthcoming EIS are identified, including the content and level of detail of the analysis, range of alternatives to be considered, mitigation measures needed, and the identification of non-relevant issues. And this was in the Times-Sale Record on Wednesday, May 8th, on page A47. With that being said, board members, we'll open it up to the public. If I can have John and Jennifer have a seat. As is customary, I'll go row by row, asking anyone who wants to speak. All I ask is that you sign your name in up on the sign-in sheet at the podium. I ask you to direct all your comments and concerns to the board members, and to conduct yourselves in a reasonable, polite manner. Anyone in the first row would like to come up and speak on this application, please do so. Second row? I'm sorry, Robin, I can't count tonight. I'm sorry, my voice is grovly here tonight.
Robin Kraus, Highland Mills. For the record, I'll be referring, my Highland Mills, or my actual address, I give it out. Series, 3 Spring Lake Road. You're welcome. As I started to say, for the record, I'll be referring to the May 1st draft scoping document. I am going to go page by page, but have no fear, I don't have comments on every page. But I'm going to start with page 6. Proposed improvements, 1.2.2, the construction of a 20,000-square-foot storage for the centers, management, and tenants. Just to note, on page 14, self-storage of the same 20,000 square feet is mentioned, but there seems to be a contradiction, because on page 14, it talks about adhere to the parking garage, whichever one it is should be consistent, or if it's both, that should be noted as well, in my opinion. Because the impacts will be different, whether it's in a parking garage or for the tenant use only. Which I was a little confused about page 7, actually, at the top, where it talks about, well, it starts on page 6, but whatever, it talks about Woodbury Cove in terms of its emergency service providers. I think that should be delineated. Ambulance, fire, police, certainly, and also adjoining emergency services areas. I don't know, I don't know what they were kind of getting at there specifically, but... On page 10, Water Resources. 3.2.1, talks about existing conditions, surface water resources in vicinity of the project site, including Woodbury Creek and Peckham's Pond. It is actually Peckham's Pond, P-E-C-K-H-A-M apostrophe S. Okay. Also, on the same page, 3.2.3, mitigation measures. I know it kind of listed a mention throughout the document, but I took exception to the phrasing of if applicable, proposals for mitigation or impacts will be included. All impacts are going to be applicable, so I would like to see the wording on that change throughout the document.
Robin, where was that again? Page 10.
Page 10 at the bottom, mitigation measures. Just the wording I had kind of issue with, if applicable. To me, it's all applicable. Again, on page 11 at the top, 3.3.1, existing conditions, it refers to Peckham's Pond. Gelling, the spelling, is incorrect, so I'd like that changed.
Robin, just spell that once more time for me.
It's Peckham's, not Peckham.
Just doesn't look right, okay.
All right. Page 13, Traffic. It starts on page 13, and follows on page 14. Objectives of the traffic plan will be to confirm that efficient operating conditions for commuters and local traffic are maintained during peak traffic hours, and it lists those providing adequate egress and egress to the project site in a manner that minimizes conflicts with local traffic along the Route 3217 corridor. Couple of things jumped out at me here. I would like very, I appreciate Mr. Collins's comments and the DOT's as well. We need very, very detailed information in terms, particularly mitigation. Whatever the center is doing now is not working, so I think they need to take a real serious look at the egress and egress in and out of their facility. I'm actually going to speak of, which will be in the alternative section, I imagine. It has been discussed over the, many over the years, about an exit, an entrance directly from and out, directly to the throughway. We've been told over the years, actually since 1983, that it can't be done. With the cash cow that the center is from the county, we all know that, and the political clout that they do have, they need to make it happen, in my opinion. So in this section, and also the alternative section, I believe they really need to address that alternative and make it work. In terms of, back to page 17, 3.10.2, potential impacts. Talks about the Peckham's Pond Cemetery. Now, not only is Peckham not spelled right again, but in actuality, it's actually the Coffey, C-O-F-F-E-Y slash Galloway, G-A-L-L-O-W-A-Y Cemetery, to give respect to the families that reside there. Okay. Page 18, 3.12.2, talks about potential, existing conditions, again, touches upon our emergency services, police, fire, and so forth, but also goes on to potential impacts. 3.12.2 discusses overnight shopping, says that the hotels, spas, accommodations, the helipad, I don't know if it should be included here, but I'm really going to recommend, actually, based on that, and the extreme impacts, I believe is going to happen if it's approved, that a separate section be included in a scoping document, and the, ultimately, the document, the EIS. Particularly for the police department, the court system that isn't really touched upon. We spend an awful lot of time down there, manpower, vehicles, it goes on and on, not only us, but the state police, the sheriff's office, neighboring communities as well pitch in. I think they deserve their own section, actually. Terms of the court system, I mean, they're flooded with Woodbury Common situations. There used to be a substation down there. I think it needs to be looked at again, at something similar, as we just about live down there. But I will certainly defer to the police department and the other emergency services to weigh in from their own perspective. Page 19, 3.13.3, talks about, starts on page 18, the employment impact that will happen through construction, retail use, et cetera, et cetera. It also goes on to talk about the current village, county, and state taxes paid by applicant, including sales taxes, property taxes. It doesn't mention the hotel tax, so I think that needs to be, since we finally got it approved, I think that needs to be addressed in there as well. And page 19, alternatives, again, this is where I think the egress and egress from, directly from and to the throughway should be specifically mentioned, so. I guess that's it for now. I have a procedural question. You mentioned written comments received before this meeting tonight. Will you accept written comments after tonight, and for how long?
Defer to Rick.
It's up to the board as to how they want to do this. There is a requirement for the draft supplemental impact statement. When that is presented, and there usually would be a public hearing, there's also a mandatory comment period where people can submit things. There's no provision for that in the Seeker regulations with respect to the scope. So it's up to the board. The board is operating, however, under one of the few very strict timeframes within the Seeker regulations, and that is that you have to finalize the scope within 60 days after it has been submitted, or the draft scope becomes the final scope. All right, so if you want to have written comments accepted, you know, if you're not going to accept the scope tonight with whatever modifications you want, but would like the applicant to come back and incorporate, be directed to incorporate some or all of the comments that were made, you'd have to make that directive. The scope is an important document, obviously. It will restrict the DEIS, and so you want to make sure that it's right, but also the Seeker regulations are very clear that this has to happen very quickly. So if you're not going to do it tonight, and you want additional time, you may want to be able to have additional comments, but I would say that they should be done very, very quickly if you're going to do that, and that the applicant needs to have time to come back with a revised one that still gives you time to approve it within that 60 days. So there's only a couple of meetings that are left in that timeframe.
Thank you.
No, thank you for that as well. I, I'm sorry, I actually did forget one other thing. I don't mean to monopolize.
That's okay.
In terms of the alternative section, I personally would like to see many alternatives discussed in terms of reconfiguring the proposed Phase 5 project. In other words, what the impacts would be with one hotel and no spa, or two hotels with no spa, or one parking garage, and it sounds like a partridge in pear tree, but it isn't. But I think the applicant gets the idea. I'd like to see many, many alternative proposals, alternatives looked at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else in the second row that would like to speak on this application with the scoping document? Third row? You in the third row? You're in the fourth row. But if no one's getting up, then I guess you can come on up. And just sign in for the record.
Sure, will do. I'll speak first, if that's okay. It takes me a little while. I got a long name here as well, so I'll help you if you need. My name is Bill Fiuravanti. I'm the Director of Economic Development for Orange County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not a resident. Go ahead and spell it out. Sure, F is in Frank, I-O-R-A, V is in Victor, A-N-T-I.
And your address?
My address is 262 Montgomery Street in Newburgh.
And just make sure you're the Director of?
Of Economic Development for Orange County.
For Orange County, just so you can have that.
And my comments are short and sweet, frankly. I just encourage the board to consider and analyze the economic impact of this project. To talk about the impact, the tremendous impact that Woodbury Common has currently on Orange County, on Woodbury, on New York State cannot be overstated. We're talking about 5,000 employees there, sales tax that comes to us in excess of $50 million, not to mention property tax, bed tax eventually. So the impact of this additional expansion is going to be tremendous and benefit all of those stakeholders that I mentioned, and I just urge the board to consider those and weigh them heavily. I'm hoping that Woodbury Common can enumerate that through their economic study and the impact study, and again, that you'll weigh those benefits heavily.
I just have a question for you.
Sure.
You've mentioned taxes, sales, property. Would you like to include school taxes on that note?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. So the school and the hotel occupancy, as Robin stated earlier, so there's numerous taxes, village, town, county, school, and the hotel occupancy.
Yes, ma'am.
Am I missing something? Sales tax. I knew I missed the most important one. So there's six different taxes that we're talking about with this project. I just want to make sure everyone is aware of the number of taxes.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Anyone in the fourth row, please come up to the podium?
My name's Thomas Powell. I live at Oakland Avenue, Central Valley, New York. I'm a resident since 1989 in Central Valley. Been dealing with Woodbury Common since then. Just this past fall, Black Friday, the disregard for the neighborhood was shameful. We had a two-way street that turned into a one-way street with cars and people trying to urinate on the side of my house and defecate on the side of my house, which I had to leave my, the inside of my house and take care of. Some of the men from Woodbury Common, from the Woodbury Police Department were over there. As far as them building hotels, there used to be bus parking here, where one of the hotels is slated, which now has been moved to a neighboring shopping center, and at times, there's 20 to 25 buses that I count on different days. And if they really get, I want to say boss, they even get their nerve up to send the buses up to the high school. Now, if they're such a, going to be such a good neighbor, they should tell us where the bus parking is. If they don't have it on-site anymore, like when it was originally proposed for Woodbury Commons, what happened to it? Where did they move it to? Just by sending it to another neighborhood shopping center doesn't make it right. And, or to the schools, all right, the middle school, the high school. One day, I counted 15 buses there. I live down the hill, yes. I have pictures, yes. And it's total disregard by them, because they gave drivers letters saying that they had permission to use the high school and the middle school for parking, which they did not. When I explained that to them, they left the parking lot. I'm a retired police officer. I do state facts when I know them. So by approving, you know, a motel, or a hotel, or whatever you want to call it up here, where the buses used to park, is ridiculous. As far as the heliport, 20 minutes away, is a perfectly great airport, Stewart International Airport, where helicopters can come and go at any hour of the day, where they have fire- they have firefighting apparatus in case something happens, as we see just last week, a helicopter went down into the East River, I think it was the East River, Thirty-Fourth Street, all right, you know, is our fire department capable of handling a disaster like that, that has to be looked at, Maria, all right, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else in the fourth row?
Hi, Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak, my name's Elke Rittger, Florence Drive, Central Valley, I will indeed, E L K E R I T T G E R.
Just say it again?
Florence Drive, F L O R A N C E, Central Valley. Thank you, I'm not nearly as organized as Ms. Cross, I really appreciate all of her comments, she's very thorough, and I'd like to echo a lot of the concerns that have already been stated, one of my concerns, of course, having a child in the district, is that Central Valley Elementary School is right across the street from there, I know it's been mentioned already that the helicopter, helicopter pad would be there, my question regarding that is what is the usage of that, is this a medevac, is this private charters and VIPs, what's the need and use planned for that, or is that not yet known, I also wonder if the, Woodbury Common, if the applicant is considering anything to supplement emergency services, a lot of our emergency services personnel are volunteer core, and yet they do provide a great deal of service to Woodbury Commons, so I'm wondering if the applicant is interested in supplementing that with their own paid emergency services staff, the previous speaker did mention that there is a great tax revenue, this is a lot of feedback on here, sorry, great tax revenue to the area, and while that is certainly true, there's also a great burden to the area, most of which is borne by those of us who live in Woodbury, not just the traffic, noise, inconvenience, but also the pollution, I think I would like to know how many people come to Woodbury Common now annually?
You can take the microphone out and hold it up to you, it might--
Just down, I don't know, is that better? How many come now, and how many they anticipate to come with this growth, also how many vehicles come now to Woodbury Common, and how many more they anticipate with this growth, if they are looking to have some greener solutions for that traffic pollution, just the additional vehicles that come and go, if there's a way to make that greener, are they also considering anything to help the employees that work there, I know most of them do not get to park onsite and they're shuttled, so do they have a plan for increased employee parking onsite? That's a lot of questions. I also kind of am worried about the safety aspect in terms of, in terms of public safety, I know Woodbury Common is a draw for many tourists, many people visit it, however, whenever I have been there, I haven't noted it to be really in line with other large venues in this day and age, which have much more significant safety plans in place, I don't, you can't walk into, let's say, West Point for example, it's another big tourist attraction in Orange County, you can't just simply go to West Point.
Jeff, why are we having so much feedback?
Must be my electric personality.
Try it now, because I think he lowered it. Bring it closer.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's no problem.
Okay, so obviously I addressed my concerns for the community, my concerns for the children that attend school across the street from Woodbury Common, concerns about the helicopter, the traffic, the pollution, I also have the same concerns about water resources, septic as well, I think those services, those resources are very limited in our area as it is, and I don't feel like Woodbury Common being in Woodbury is doing enough to, as it is, to substantially offset those burdens that we experience living in the community, I think any conversations regarding growth need to also include plans for offsetting the burden. I also know Senator Scupas has brought up the option of potentially bringing a train station to serve Woodbury Common, is any of that being considered as part of this growth plan, to alleviate some of the vehicular traffic coming and going, and use more public mass transit, and I'm probably forgetting a few other things, but if, as Robin said, if there's, if it's possible to submit further written questions, then I would appreciate that opportunity to do so as well.
Anyone else in the fifth row?
Hi, everybody, how are you? So my name is Ashok Patel, I am a Central Valley resident, Ashok.
A S H O K. Greenwich, Central Valley.
So, let me disclose a couple things, so I am Central Valley resident, and since January two thousand and eleven, so last nine years, Orange County resident for last twenty-three years, and the Monroe Woodbury School District since May two thousand and one, so counted eighteen years, I want to also disclose, I personally do not own any businesses, or I do not have any partnership with any businesses.
I need you to direct it to us.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, I do not have any relation, business relation with anybody, some of the public, people mentioned that the concerns, and I, I agree with those concerns, what the, some of the businesses mentioned that the, you know, how much revenue we are going to generate from there, so now I want you to help me out with that, when I'm hearing, I'm a little bit in shock, you are saying we are going to get the cell tax, we are going to get the property taxes, which are the taxes you are counting?
There's the village.
Village taxes.
Town.
Town taxes.
County.
County.
School.
So, let's do one by one, school taxes, help me, doesn't the Woodbury Town granted the tax exam?
No.
Ever?
They pay full taxes on everything, there is no tax exemption.
Ever, ever, I am saying.
When they first opened up, there was, but not, they have--
Am I right? So that's the one of the part, now cell tax you are talking about, right now in the town, there is a, two motels, am I right, are they always full, there is another motel built in the Bloomingburg, if you are looking, it is there, so if they are going to build two more properties, what is happening, it's just competition, there is no increase in the cell tax, people are going from the one property to another property, it's not the overcrowding of those property, it's not the where people don't have place to stay, so that's just exaggerated information that we are going to get the extra more money. County taxes, how much money Woodbury got the cell taxes, last time there was extra money, I got the, some news that was million dollar or something, Woodbury got how much, one seventy-five from the county taxes, somewhere there around, exact number, I don't have it, so how did it benefit it? One hundred seventy-five thousand dollar, and I have to sit on the traffic? Second part, police officers, why my town police officer has to run and respond in the Woodbury Common, you tell me, when the population increase, does crime increase? Tell me, does, yes, it does increase the crimes, it's a given fact, go into New York City, why the crime increase, because urbanization brings the crimes, and it's not the only people, it's the businesses. My third part is, proposal what is made the two properties, what will happen with the two properties, helipad, for what, what type of, and how many medical emergencies that Woodbury handled in the last ten years that required a helipad? How many? I haven't heard that, it's just luxury service, and trust me, I am not against the businesses, I want to have the businesses, we need to have the money, but that is exaggeration, the property is like one of the public person mentioned about the, one of the town member that somebody was peeing there, wait a minute, so our Woodbury police officer has to go and respond there to say, hey, don't pee in my property, it's my town, it's a police officer job, or it's a town board job, to what you are bringing in the town? Are you bringing problem, are you bringing money, or are you bringing the balance? So the question remain is, you need the four hundred eighty rooms, build two buildings, do you need the helipads? I don't see any justification, if there is, I have to wait in the traffic, in the DOT construction, when they do the construction, I have to, somebody has to drive to New York City for one and a half hour, and sit another half hour, does that make sense? I like to see my family, I like to spend more time with my family, not on the traffic, so if that makes sense, I think you need to rethink about it, what their proposal is, taxes, it's just exaggerated, if they are paying the property taxes hundred percent, what is today's, that's a one part, what the county receive it, it's a county recipients, it's not the Woodbury Town makes the money, there is a differences, what comes in my house, that's in my house, so Woodbury Town is my house, and that's how I look at it. I think I said enough, and thank you for everybody's time, you know, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the fifth row, please come up to the microphone?
Hi, my name's Randy Brogan, I live on Sunset Towers in Highland Mills, most of my concerns about the scope, I have already been addressed by several members of the public, the main thing, when I look at this, like when I put up, when I put up my pool, I had to have like something separate for my fence, my electric, my pool, there's a lot going on here, and I feel like there are too many things, and there needs to be more options, like the helipad, I lived in an apartment building where there was a helipad, it is so distracting, and this is going to be across from an elementary school that my children go to, it just doesn't make sense, I just feel like it's so much like thrown up here, like let's see what can stick, and there, there needs to be more due diligence, I know the studies are being done, and the traffic studies, are the noise studies, I mean, have there been, like in the past, like helipads, like across the street from a school district in New York State, are there laws, are there, is there anything, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an expert by any means, I'm just a concerned parent, and this obviously is always going to be an inconvenience, traffic wise, more people, hotels, I mean, the traffic study, there's going to be different traffic, it's not just shoppers now, there's a spa, there's hotels, if there's hotels, the restaurants on the property will probably stay open later, or open earlier to cater to the needs of the people staying in the hotels, I mean, there's, there's just a lot going on, I feel like it really needs to be, there really needs to be a lot more due diligence in terms, in terms of the, what you guys are looking at, mainly the helipad, the noise, the safety, like everybody has mentioned, is a major concern for everybody in this area, it has been, and it keeps coming up, and it's for a reason, it, there's a real safety concern with emergency vehicles getting in and out, and what if everybody's over there responding to something, what happens if something's going on on my block, that's what I think, whenever, I just saw four police officers rushing into the exit of the Woodbury Commons, who else is on duty, like right now, like what, what happens if something, if there's an emergency on this side of town, they can't get here because of the traffic at the Woodbury Commons, so that's another concern, I wish that the board and everybody else addresses, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the fifth row? Just give me one second, Elke, let me see, I'll go back to the first, I was just going to go in the back row, anyone on the back wall? I'll come to the first row, Elke, I just want to get anyone, I just want to get someone who hasn't spoken for--
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I wasn't going to speak tonight--
We need your name.
No, Jim Kelly Harriman, but I have a question, and it's more on the overall picture of what you're addressing, the sewage question that is arising today, which is affecting Orange County, Harriman, Woodbury, all of the surrounding communities, the sewage is at its limit, we have a problem, and it's known in Orange County as a major problem, is this going to be a big impact, obviously if you have two hotels, a sauna, and all this other stuff, and take, while you're taking into, into consideration, look at what's else being built around the community, because you have to, we can't just say that it's going to be only this coming into the sewage, I think that it's going to be one of the biggest problems, you got, traffic is a problem, you want to lower your taxes, getting the money is important, but I feel that if we don't have enough sewage, and it's going to be a major problem very soon, that's going to affect, I wish somebody from Orange County would talk about, besides what a great revenue, what impact would this have on our sewage system, which is--
Can you direct it, you have to talk to us, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a point of having somebody from Orange County come and talk about taxes, and if, I prefer they talked about the sewage, and what impact that would have on us today, I thank you for letting me get up here again.
Oh, no problem. Anyone who has not spoken that would like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Allen Cione, L Y N N, A L L E N, C I O N E, and I'm the President of the Orange County Chamber of Commerce, I'm not a resident, and I know nothing about sewage, so I can't address that, I apologize, but I did want to just comment on something that was brought up regarding the train, if we look historically, the western side of the Hudson, the MTA line, the New Jersey Transit, is the one that is receiving the most problem, ridership has down about forty percent in the past decade, the ridership throughout the Port Jervis Line has suffered tremendously, there is already a train station two miles from, from the, from Woodbury Common, I believe a number of years ago, there was a partnership to have a shuttle that would go from that train station to the common, that was not successful, people did not ride it, people did not ask for that service, the train on this side, and I say this as somebody who takes the bus from Goshen to visit my kids in New York City all the time, I would much rather take the bus, it takes ninety minutes and I'm at the Port Authority, if I take the train and I miss something in Secaucus, or I miss that transfer, I'm sunk, so if somebody's coming up here to visit, even to stay, it's not a very, it's not a particularly convenient transportation method, there's other alternatives, I'm sure, but as far as the train, it's, it's about a two-hour trip, there's already been the exploration of having a shuttle from an extant station, that was not successful, so I'm just offering and hoping that that is not really considered, because it's been tried in--